We started it at the visitor's center at about 10 o'clock and broke ground, shoveled some sand, ready to go on White Avenue, Judge Seco area. And that went over well. We had the governor and Dr. Keenan from Mississippi State and a lot of folks from there. It was a tremendous gathering. The General Wolf Davidson and 81st Room Commander Chris Robinson was there. And I think it was, you know, Biloxi and Keesler really are starting something that is going to position us for a lot of growth and a lot of, you know, expansion of this campus. So it was really exciting. Both events today or this week were very positive. So that almost concludes my report. I'll ask Bianca Booth to come up here and give us a little tobacco-free Harrison County report, okay? Welcome Bianca.
Thank you. My name is Bianca Booth and this is Jerry Carroll Lee Jr. We are employees of New Beginnings Ministries of Stone County and I am also a resident of Harrison County. I will be working as the project director for Mississippi Tobacco-Free Coalition of Harrison County. Jerry is the IT specialist for New Beginnings Ministry and he will be developing our data charts for our presentations. Now, as we face a crucial moment in Harrison County's public health history, tobacco-related illness continues to claim lives and strain our hospitals. And yet, the solution is clear. It's effective and already working across Mississippi. Today, I want to share with you just a little bit of a backstory and some real data that shows that smoke-free policies are more than just good ideas. They are life-saving, cost-cutting, and community strengthening solutions. A landmark study conducted by Dr. Robert McMillan and colleagues at Mississippi State University, published in the Journal of the Mississippi State Medical Association, analyzed hospital admission rates from 2013 to 2016 across 82 Mississippi counties. Now, this is what they found. Counties with smoke-free ordinances had significantly lower hospital admission rates for tobacco-related illnesses. That includes heart attacks, strokes, pneumonia, asthma, and chronic obstructive pulmonary disease, which is CPOD. Hospitalizations were 12% lower in smoke-free counties and admissions for pneumonia and stroke were especially impacted. It was lower also. But here's the kicker. There were no differences in admissions for illnesses not related to tobacco, that the reductions are directly tied to smoke. So this just shows that the reductions are directly tied to smoke exposure and that's not just a coincidence. So now, let's talk about Harrison County, my county, our county. Despite being the second-largest county in Mississippi, only one of its cities, which is Gulfport, has an ordinance since 2008. And none of the other cities, Biloxi, Long Beach, DeIverville, or Past Christian, had a smoke-free ordinance in place during the study period or even today. This places our community on the wrong side of the health divide. I ask that you allow me to come in periodically to give you health updates on how we can address these problems together. Not to pressure you about an ordinance, but to allow you to review the facts and we work together to solve and come up with a solution. New Beginning Ministries have been a vital partner and a grant recipient of Mississippi State Department of Health Office of Tobacco Control for over 17 years, working in Stone, George, and Green Counties. We ask that you appoint someone to be a part of our local Mississippi Tobacco-Free Coalition Board and help to help bring fresh ideas and changes that will result in a healthier community in Harrison County. I truly appreciate the opportunity and hoping to form a partnership with the great leaders of this city council. Thank you.
Thank you Bianca, appreciate it. Any questions? Thank you, appreciate it. And that concludes my report, I think, Rick, right?
Thank you Mayor. There's no department reports, we'll get into council reports, Mr. Gray.
Yeah, Mr. Jamie Lee, couple of questions. Get an update on the Claire Hornsby Park, on the walkway on the playground equipment? It's still not repaired.
We've looked at it, we're assessing the damage right now and hopefully have something very soon on what it's going to take to repair that.
Okay, and the latches? Have you had a chance to look at the?
Haven't had a chance with the latches yet, but we'll get on that immediately.
Some of the parents are complaining that they got to bring a chain or rope to tie it so their kids don't run out.
That's at Hornsby, yes sir.
That's at the Hornsby, yeah. And the Point Cadet, I've been getting a lot of calls, people want to know an update on that one.
Right, that's something we're still working with administration on as far as, you know, the funding and everything and what needs to be done down there with the playground and splash pad.
Right, right. I told my ass for an update on there, but thank you. The homeless situation, is Peter, is there any way we can work with Chief Miller and try to get some kind of resolution going or ordinance? The kids can't even play at the playground. I mean, everyone you go to, if you go to Lighthouse Park, there's 10, 15 of them laid out on the benches. I had to call Chief Miller yesterday, right there by Nativity Park, Hornsby Park, had a guy sleeping, passed out on the picnic table. Chief Miller sent somebody over there by dark, they had four in there. This morning, when I went by there at 5:00, there was three sleeping in there. And I mean, they're just, the boardwalk going around the loop, I mean, it's starting to just get overwhelming. We got to do something. So I don't know if we can get anything figured out.
Let me respond. I'm on the same page, I think we're all on. We got, Biloxi got a little bad press when we started talking about removing a shade structure. That particular thing was solely related to the homeless because they were part of it, but it was not, it was actually somebody got assaulted the night before, hit in the head with a beer cane, somebody punched a lady. And that's when we got inserted in this thing. So it's about, you know, public safety and that's, you know, we just got a bum rap about that particular incident. Chief, you know, at least three nights in a row, we were trying to solve that, but it's the same thing you're talking about. People not being able to enjoy a regular, you know, enjoy your community by somebody or some, you know, group taking, you know, some liberties that they shouldn't. They're not considerate, not, you're doing what, not doing their best behavior. And then it happens along Division Street too. Things that they do, you know, I can't say if they're homeless or not homeless, but it's not the right thing to do. They're not behaving right and that's our problem. If people would, you know, be respectful and be considerate, that's all we're asking. We don't harass anybody, but we're talking about what we're all caring about, being able to be safe and enjoy our community.
Right, yeah, and underneath Division Street, it's started trash everywhere and it's starting to get out of control there again. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gray, Mr. Marshall.
We're going to call that the Jamie C.
Yeah.
Okay, on Henry Beck Park, you guys came out, they did a good job cleaning up, getting things going. They're not giving me that deep clean that I'm going to need in order that those that are complaining to me are complaining about. One of the things that we have is the gates, the fencing, the gates on the outside perimeter. The city paid a lot of good money to have those put there. I'd like to see them get operational, okay? Do you have any plans for that?
Well, yes sir, we're in contact with a fence company right now and they are, hopefully sooner than later, going to go out there and give us an estimate of what it takes to repair all of the fencing that may be damaged or broken. So we are in contact with a company at this time to fix it.
That's a big company called KBEB Fence, that's, you know, they bid it for those repairs. So that's, you know, work those kinds of things in their schedule.
We are talking about the perimeter gate, right?
Yes sir, any of the gates or fencing that is around the park, we're looking at getting estimates on what it would take to fix that. Any damage or?
You got a timeframe on the bathroom door locks?
Sir?
The bathroom doors?
We spoke with Mr. Bellius actually this morning and he was fabricating the steel that's going to go on the outside of the door to secure those. And as soon as we can get those up and secure them, then we're going to start looking at what it's going to take to repair the insides of them so we can keep them locked up and hopefully secure from being damaged again.
Okay, when you say fabricating something, what are they like jailhouse bars or something? We don't want to make the part of it like a prison.
It's, right now, it's just a door and with an exposed handle. And in order to get in there, all you would have to do is go in there and break the handle. So what these are going to be is something that we can lock up from the outside to where when we have functions down there, we can just unlock for the renter or whatever, then secure them and keep them open for whenever the function needs a restroom facility at the park.
Okay, in the park, we see things that shouldn't be there. People just leave, the homeless people, I don't know who's doing it. Maybe the guys playing basketball, you know, come out of their gym shoes and things, but we're finding there's too much clothing just left in the park. When you guys are cleaning up, can you ask them if they see clothing? Take it with them.
100%, yes sir.
Okay, also, there's a couple of chairs, house chairs, there's an office chair that's not a part of the park. Can you ask you guys to take that with them also?
Sir.
Okay, on the ground is the bottle caps, just probably 2,000, 3,000 bottle caps. Do you have a plan that we can get all of them picked up?
Where are the bottle caps at?
Everywhere.
Everywhere, just get them?
Everywhere.
We'll look at seeing what we can do to get those up as well.
Okay, all right. On the park, the people sleeping in the park and things like that, I want to thank you. I was able to go out and I saw your officers, they're coming around, they're all patrolling more. And also, I've also stepped up my patrol, going in there if I know them, ask them to keep moving myself. I met a couple of your officers out there and they handled themselves very well. They made that person who said that he was homeless, they made him feel part of the community. And in talking at first, he asked me, did I know that young man? And I said no, because I just walked up and it's like 1:30 in the morning. And as I began to talk to him, I realized who he was, who his family was. I was able to contact his sister on the phone and we communicated and she says she's going to be working with him also. But that's what we call community policing and that's what we're looking for. I wanted to say thank you for that. As far as the rules, I know I keep promising it to you, but we are going to work on those rules, we're going to work on getting everything straight. But I want to get my gates up first so we can say, lock when the park closed, gates are closed, gates will be locked and we're going to be able to do that, okay? I appreciate you and I thank you. Also, I noticed that, and I don't want to open another firestorm, but I requested very simply that if you see, if your officers are passing on Division Street, right there under I-10, what are you getting off of our I-10, ask whoever it is there, you know, lay it out on the sidewalk to keep moving, just tap them on the shoulder, just ask them to keep moving. I've noticed it has been better. I've also stopped a couple of times and I've talked to a few people and just to, you know, I understand their situation, but I explained to them, no, you just can't sleep on the sidewalk. So if you can just ask your officers to continue that, I sure appreciate it.
We will. I'll pass on your positive comments to them, they'll appreciate that.
Thank you, thank you. All right, as far as the events over the weekend, we had a celebration, a historical mark was placed for Tyrone's barbershop. I was pleased and happy to have my fellow council members show up and support the events of East Biloxi. Tyrone's been a very important person to our community, he's been our eyes, our ears. He's been there for over 60 years, he's worldwide known. He go anywhere, they know who Tyrone is. And that's been, that's something that's very important to our community, I appreciate it. I also explained to Mr. Tyrone that Mayor, that you told me specifically, you are going to get by there and talk to him and speak to him, but you had to do that train and he understood and he said he knows you, he knows you, get by there. I have a letter of complaint from about a skate park. That'd be you again, Jamie.
Go ahead, I'll answer that one there.
Okay, the complaint was about the loudness, late-night thing going on at that, at the skate park. Way the I-10 bridge is set up, part of it is in mine, is in my ward and the other part is in Mr. Gray's ward. So I guess we're split on this. If there's complaints going on, are you guys aware that they are, that neighbors are complaining that the loudness may be getting a little bit too loud?
We got an email the other day on that one, Mr. Marshall, and we're working through Main Street on there to be able to put some signs and all up from that. Once I get the signs and the time limits are identified from there, then we'll get with Chief Miller and then we'll enforce point-blank on those. But those are what we're looking at right now and I think Mr. Gray was the one who sent me the email on it the other day. I responded to him, I did not respond to you, but I didn't know that was in your district because he sent me the email. But we have addressed that already and so those are things that we're looking at to be able to put the signs up, put the time limits of when the park is available and not available. And then we'll enforce that through either Chief Miller or through other means.
Okay, you just kind of remember that for some crazy reason, they got, they take the I-110 and they split it. I'll get you calling me west coast and him east coast, but if there's a problem in that area, under that bridge, anything like that, it'd be able to address to both of us, that way we, I can stay in the loop also. Jamie, again, can you get me a list of, on the parks, the guys in charge of cleaning up the parks, the guys in charge of cutting the grass? That's two different crews?
Yes sir.
Okay, the guys in charge of cutting the grass, can you get me a list of all the grasses in Ward, in East Biloxi? Let's go from Ward 1 and Ward 2, all the parks and any areas that they're responsible for cutting. Okay, that way I can have an idea. It's kind of confusing because I'm reading the shirts and I'm seeing them cutting something that's not a park and it says on there, shirts, parks and recreation. So if I can get an understanding of how that's happening, so, because I'm going to be putting a lot of pressure on you as far as parks, 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 parks. And I don't want to be saying that, well, they're, they can't get there, they're doing things that has nothing to do with what's on their shirt. Okay, that's all, I'm good.
All right, thank you, Mr. Marshall, Mr. Neil.
Jamie, I want to ask you about Hillah Park. It's starting to look pretty good out there and I got a couple of ideas. You remember where the tennis court was?
Yes sir.
I'd like to see a dog park, but right there. See, we got one now, but it's just a little bit too little. That would be a good place for a dog park. And the bleachers by the?
Basketball courts.
They could be gone, so you can cut the grass easier.
Yes sir.
All right, but other than that, the park's starting to look pretty good. And I know, Marshall, about the bathroom doors? Well, we ain't got, we're bad, we don't have one. You got porta-potties, so you're doing good. We need new bathrooms at Hillah Park, bad.
Right, and I've been working with Director Weaver, Mayor, on that. We're looking at some different options of what it's going to take to make that happen yet.
Because Hillah Park could be a showpiece.
Absolutely.
I mean, that's the biggest park we have in Biloxi and it don't look as good as the other ones.
Working on it, yes sir.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes sir.
And Camellia Street, did they forget about us? On Camellia Street, did they like forget about us? It's like nothing's there. No people, they started a curb and they never came back.
Yes sir, the contractor, Neekays Brothers Construction Company, they have the revised elevations for that street. As you just pointed out, Curb and Gutter Crew Landmark came in, they did their part of it. Drainage is in, there's no reason that Neekays cannot start grading and prepping that road for asphalt, other than that their major subcontractor, Warren Paving, is on another project and they said they are about four weeks out before they can come back to this area, which also affects our Bovall Road and the aggregate. So it looks like we're going to be suffering with that issue for at least another four weeks until Warren Paving can come.
Okay, so they, no way they would be able to put no temporary paving down?
Well, we've got the temporary that's there on Camellia.
Yeah.
We don't have it on Southern, Camellia was the main north-south, obviously, but it's contractor, general contractor, his scheduling with his sub, he just?
Right, and I know the people who live in that neighborhood, just terrible for them.
Yes sir, I agree and it, we drive it every day and try to get on to them about, make sure it's graded and water valves and potential damages and?
All right, thank you.
Yes sir.
And one more, the Broadwater Golf Course. Are we ever going to rate these people up like we do other people? Or are we just going to let them just keep on doing what they're doing?
You know, we're doing what we can do with regard to, I guess, rest that has taken place. And I think Jerry has been in communications with, you know, Roy and some of these other ones on what their schedule is on following up. You know, it's transient, it gets, gets bad and good and you have to continually keep things down. And, you know, I think some of that has fallen through the cracks and?
What I was thinking is like, when y'all were talking about the warning on the beach, if you remove it, they would leave. I kind of the same thing out there.
More will come too, that's, that's the problem. I mean, literally, I mean, the ones that do arrest are new beach to the block, right? And give them a little story on that.
Yeah, you know, my guys are out there every day, every day. They're making a, a lot of these people are brand-new, we've never seen them before, they come into town and for whatever reason, that seems to gravitate to. We've all talked to Cotton, I can't give you an answer on that. I can't, I can't.
Yeah, okay. I go out and talk to them a lot too and they tell me they don't have nowhere to go, they're just trying to make it.
Yeah, that's a difficult situation.
I like everybody, there's no solution for homeless.
Well, you know, again, coming back to some of the flack we took the other day, okay? Those people that would, out on the beach, for instance, okay? They're less than a mile away, a mile and a half away from the Mercy Cross Center. At the Mercy Cross Center, they've relocated 136 people that used to be homeless and are doing the day, they can't sleep there, but most of the, most of the people that attend, they're sleeping in the beach or sleeping somewhere else. So there's some solutions. Matter of fact, every Wednesday, there's a psychiatrist and a medical doctor there. And so what we're working on is a long-term solution to end that part of, hey, this is where you sleep, not on the beach, not bothering folks underneath the, you know, in open spaces. That's the, and hooking them up with, if they want to, you know, have a permanent non-homeless situation, want to give them the help. But not a lot of them are in the, you know, they understand where they can get help. But there is help, there is, and again, 136 in the last year and a half, I believe, is some of the good things that we don't get credit or, you know, people don't understand. There are solutions. We got to get them to take care and to get to a place where they can get help, if they want help, okay? So we're trying the best we can, but we're all trying to wind up with a permanent overnight place to put them. Peter will tell you in the state legislature, put some language on folks about loitering and sleeping, you know, where you shouldn't be sleeping. And it's pushing people to the limit. I mean, you and I, people want to be compassionate, want to help, but you know, enough is enough in a lot of cases.
It's just, it's important to remember that, I keep saying this, we don't have a homeless problem, we have a mental health problem. That's what we have and the rest of the country has the same thing. I don't know why it's that way, but it is. But if we keep referring to it as just a homeless problem, we're not going to get anywhere because that's not what it is.
All right, thank you. Is that it? Mr. Gray?
Jamie, no, I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding. Just kidding. Now, hey, look, first of all, Christie, thank you to the engineering department and all your staff and everyone who was instrumental in getting the bridge back up in a timely manner, back open to marine traffic, so thank you. I know that was done over the weekend, there's only so much we can do, but thank you for that. Thanks to Stacy Packer, the rest of the administration, and everyone that assisted with this Amtrak celebration. It was first class. It was, it was nice to be out there with all those people and just to see the enthusiasm with the cheerleaders, the walking club, marching club, and all the motogrill enthusiasts. It was good, so thanks to everyone who put that together. One last thing, I met with one of the board members from Memorial Hospital and the thing that bothers me is when I mention him, that no one will be able to say that they were born in the city of Biloxi again, if you take labor and delivery away from Memorial Biloxi, other than Keesler, right? So with that being said, we have a follow-up call and he did say that, without giving his name and direct language, that it wasn't a permanent thing, that they're looking to revisit that. So I explained to him, I'd rather hear the terms suspending labor and delivery than ceasing labor and delivery. So just to keep everyone aware that we are on top of that and we feel the need of being prideful about being born in the city of Biloxi.
Let me follow up with that, I had, you know, a conversation specifically, one of the, it's about with Kent Nico last night. And, you know, there's some collaboration with Keesler Medical Center as far as Level 3 Trauma Center, as well as OB-GYN was, had been suspended at Keesler for almost two years, I think. It's coming back. So there's some opportunity to figure out, you know, the solution. I think it will take months, you know, maybe a year, but he, like I said, he understands the significance of that and I think we'll work through that. It's an issue right now, but we don't want, we don't want it to be a permanent thing.
That's right, profit's not a dirty word, but at the same time, you know, we need, heaven forbid, emergencies right here in downtown Biloxi and we don't have time to get to Singing River Memorial.
Well, I think Kent would be, he can explain the situation from an operational and a safety thing and it's not, you know, it's not what we always want to hear, but it is what it is and I think he's willing and putting his efforts to, you know, to help us solve that.
Right, yeah, and not to mention the staff that, once they stop that, the staff, I got several nurses that live in Ward 4 that, you know, were told that they don't have a job. So, you know, that, it's a trickle effect when you don't have the staffing, I get it, but at the same time, I know the legislature have put stuff in place where if you in dire need for medical staff, they have stipulations where they'll pay your college or things of that nature. But I understand the staffing issue, I understand how it is here in Biloxi with the on-call situation and all the things, but at the same time, it is a main concern for us here in Biloxi.
Thank you, Mr. Gray, was that it? Mr. Tuesday?
Yeah, thank you. Mayor, I can't remember the name of that new facility out at Keesler, it's got a mile-long title with the Cyber Security.
Mississippi Cyber Security and Technology Center.
That's a big deal, folks. That is a huge deal for the coast. Mayor, I know you and local legislators and other folks here on the coast, Keesler, the engineers out there, Mississippi State.
Mississippi State, yeah.
Yeah, did put in a lot of time and effort, this is probably four or five years?
Yes, it's been?
It's something, so I want to compliment you on that.
Well, you know, as I mentioned in my remarks today, it kind of all started freeing that little corner of the campus up, so to speak, you know, cutting out, eventually, very shortly, we'll open up White Avenue to Judge Seco, which kind of, you know, puts blood through the veins again. But that was all possible because of the new main gate off of Division Street. That would not have been possible had that not been done. So that little area, it's a sequence of events had made that stuff, you know, but it's a $60 million deal and it's a commitment, another, I guess, thing to keep Keesler viable, another mission that would be there. And they, right now, I think, train 7,000 people a year in cyber, right now. So it's going to even kick it up and inhibit every flavor except up in Coast Guard at Keesler at this point and doing what the Mississippi Gulf Coast Community College has a pretty significant effort that will move to the center, move to our White Avenue, Judge Seco. We've been having conversations about an overlay district for, you know, the expansion and the, you know? and the, you know, it'll grow, the campus will grow once this, what's that, 300,000, I don't know how many, 200,000 square feet will be in place. So it is a big deal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, I just wanted to compliment you as well.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, let me say that, let me say that.
Don't make me call Jamie up here again. Uh, I do want to share an observation with you, I want to compliment Mr. Weaver as our new CIO, he's on the ball and on the job. That's just my observation, I appreciate your hard work.
Thank you.
When do we begin work on tidling grants? I know, I know we usually submit them, what, like in the middle of winter, January, or whatever?
Got two of the main ones right now in the portal, with, uh, for Cool Street, additional 500,000 for Cool Street expansion of the boat ramp, and then also the Oak Street extension to that pier. So that's about a million is what we asked for, and they just stopped it last year, so we re-invite that, uh, that's on...
So there's no deadline for submission per se, it's just you could submit to the portal at any time?
Yeah, and what was said last year that we hadn't, you know, none was given to anyone.
There are two thoughts I have. One is, uh, where the Churchill Avenue ditch is, all right, which is right beside, uh, the park, Penzoil Park, a little creek, and it drains into the bay, and that might be eligible for a tidlands grant, and if so, you can kind of clean that up and improve it, and also make that a nice little scenic part of the park there. That's the first recommendation I have for you along those lines. The second is, there are two sections of the boardwalk, the concrete boardwalk in West Biloxi, between the mall, actually between DeBee's Road and the Broadwater Marina, and each of those two sections might be a quarter of a mile. I mean, if we put in another request for those two spots right there, I mean, that would give you a walk from DeBee's all the way...
To Broadwater, probably.
Yeah, all the way to Miramore Park.
Well, we've talked about that, you know, with everyone, Omezzo may be the way we would pursue that, but the county, and I think it was, uh, they'll be working on a section from Porter Avenue to White Avenue, and there's some of it, there are bits and pieces there. That may be the next play, but that's through the county. But, you know, hopefully they'll do that, you know, the complete 26 miles of that. But, yeah, definitely, it's easy to fill in bits and pieces, and then, and then actually retrofit that new wall, which would, you know, keep sand off the beach even further. That's on the radar.
26 miles would be wonderful, I'm just interested in two-quarter mile section.
We have 17,000 linear feet, okay, in Biloxi of Seawall, okay? 5,000 of them is what, between Oak Street and the Small Craft Hall is what we need all the way, and that would be our goal. And you don't see any sand on that beach there, for a couple of reasons. That is our goal, and the easiest, low-hanging fruit would be to fill in between DeBee's Road and the mall, and then take you all the way to the Coliseum to the, uh, to the Broadwater.
Okay, thank you. Kerry, do you remember flashing that sign up there? This is, uh, the sign at O'Reilly Park, or what used to be the sign at O'Reilly Park.
I'm aware of that, yeah.
And anyway, we've been working on this for, I've been mentioning it for a year, if we could just...
We can do that.
Get a real sign there, okay? All right, thank you. And the, uh, the last thing, and I would just urge the administration to do this concerning the facilities, particularly in respect to the Carnival crews, Peter, is we have a first reading today, we'll have a second reading, uh, next, next Tuesday. It would be, I think, great, I would urge you again to have just another meeting with the crew representatives and answer all their questions. Uh, I know that a number of questions were answered, I still get an, I've gotten an email or two asking about it. I know zippity-doo about the crew life, I'm not a crew dude, but some of these folks up here are, and I don't know if they've gotten emails, but there's...
We'll get you an application.
There's still some, there's still some concerns. I'll consider it after we get those tidling grants.
You're gonna need one.
But that's, that's all I have right now, I just know there's still some questions out there that would probably serve everybody if, you know, you got in touch with folks and just probably run over it line by line, it'd be a little time-consuming, but, uh, I think without it, you're still gonna have some confusion. That ends my report, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tuesday. Mr. Shoemaker?
Yes, a number of things I was gonna discuss have already been brought up, so I'll just have, I guess, just one thing, grass cutting. I know Public Works has been out more than grass, but I'm getting complaints daily, multiple a day some days, and I know it's been raining, it doesn't help, but we could just keep on grass cutting, and we'll, Devin, I appreciate it, and that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shoemaker. I got a few things, um, hey, I'd just like to reiterate what a fantastic day it was on Amtrak. Everybody was so excited, even Ocean Springs, when we bought Ocean Springs, I wasn't even a stop, and they had confetti going off and bands playing and all that kind of stuff, so kudos to all the cities, and certainly Biloxi, I know Biloxi Tourism stands ready to welcome the new visitors and do our part to make sure it's, uh, very successful. Also, we lost two really good Biloxians, you know, I just want to kind of recognize that. Brenda Johnson, she was 30 years employee of the city of Biloxi, and little-known fact, if you, if you read a little bit about her, she's the sister of Fred Hayes, famous astronaut in Biloxi, but I'm telling you, uh, she's just as popular with her work ethic and her contributions and her tireless hours that she served the city of Biloxi. Peter Boyle, we lost him as well. If y'all don't know who Peter Boyle is, kind of get to know in the next few days who he was. He has five...
Six.
Six World Series rings, six World Series rings. I don't know too many people who have one, let alone six. So, um, we certainly want to close our meeting today in memory of them. Let's see, uh, so I'm gonna, all right, so one of the things with Amtrak, I got to sit by some of our other city officials and everything, and one interesting point Ocean Springs brought up is that, and I'm assuming our agreement is the same way, in order for any lights to be repaired on the Biloxi Ocean Springs Bridge, 10% or more of the lights have to be out. Do y'all know that? Is that, is that... Anybody know of that? All right, so I'm not gonna belabor the point, but an interesting thing that one of the city officials said, why don't we get together? So I'd like to maybe charge the administration, looking in of the city getting with Ocean Springs, reviewing those contracts, and perhaps we can look at renting a truck from the state, and then when we have lights that are out, they can come down here, we can call them up, schedule it, they can come down here instead of paying an exorbitant amount of money to contractors who say they can't fix anything until it's 10% or more of the lights out.
Now, let me refresh the situation with those bridges, the lights on that bridge, it was like 100 and something of them out. We agreed to take on the maintenance, once they replaced all of them with LED, and, uh, and we were expecting 10 years of life out of it. And, uh, so, and there's a couple of things that got knocked down right at Myrtle Street, and, uh, so there's a matter of, I never heard that 10% situation. We feel like we've got some warranty work due to us, okay?
Yes, sir.
And a lot of my friends count those lights, every time they come over the bridge, and, uh, so we do have a little, uh, conversation, you know, with the people who put it up, and the agreement we signed, and we're gonna press that to make sure we're treated fairly.
Well, that sounds good. The other thing I've heard is those lights that they are replacing with the Cadillac version last just as long as the Chevy version, and, uh, so perhaps that needs to become under...
And that was the one that said they were gonna replace it, and we would take, you know, the maintenance on it, and, you know, 10 years was expected, to not have problems with it.
All right, but a little communication relations rings wouldn't hurt, I think they're willing, they want to leverage the power of Biloxi along with...
I think they have more out than we do, though.
They may have. All right. I invited Ryan Bradley, I'm gonna call him up here in a second, but I'm gonna talk a little bit about this, you've seen in the news about these oyster fishermen that are confronting yet another hurdle, and as many of you know, in 2019, when the spillways devastated our oyster reefs and shrimp, crabs, you name it, that was terrible. Mr. Nail, if I told you there was 600,000 gallons of river water that was released, would that be a lot of water?
Yeah.
No, it wasn't 600,000. What if I told you it was 600 million? That'd be a lot of water? It wasn't 600 million. You think it was 600 billion? No. 600 trillion with a T, 600 trillion gallons of polluted river water, rushed down into our sound and damaged the reefs, put a stress on, I can't tell you, countless families who depend on that Gulf. Well, guess what? You know, we formed the Sound Coalition and others, and along with Billy Nungesser and others, we, there hasn't been but one opening, I think, in 2020, it was short, a short opening, but ever since then, they have, they have washed themselves. In fact, this past year, they were within a foot or less of opening it, where in the past, they probably would have opened it, and trillions of more gallons of polluted river water would have came down there. Well, guess what we're facing now? We're facing, and listen, my friends in DMR, I respect the leadership in DMR, I respect our congressmen, our representatives, our senators, but I think they got this one wrong, dead wrong. They're wanting to lease these oyster reefs out here to private companies and leave a little bit for the little guys out there, and I just think that is fundamentally wrong. I think more needs to be done, we talk about motogras and bringing everybody to a workshop to get a couple of these things right, that we're trying to, trying to make sure we're not burdening our motograv people, but I think more needs to be done, sitting across, looking people in the eye, and let's get this thing right, not wrong. It's fundamentally wrong what they're doing, and I, you know, I've had sleepless nights since we crafted this resolution, and I prepared a statement today, I'm gonna read it, and I'm gonna ask Ryan Bradley to come up here, and this, this is for all our neighbors, anglers, oyster men, shrimpers, and all who call the Gulf Coast home. Today, we stand at the crossroads where the heart of Biloxi, the spirit of the Gulf, and the backbone of our economy, our watermen and women, face a decision that will echo for generations. The Mississippi Sound is not a privilege. It is a public treasure, owned by every Mississippian who has ever cast a line, checked a trap, or tasted the bounty of the sea. It has sustained families, built communities, and forged a reputation. That reputation was the seafood capital of the world. That no longer exists today, but at one time, we were at the pinnacle of where seafood sat. It wasn't by accident, but by a legacy of public access, stewardship, and shared responsibility. We must ask, who owns, who owns the Gulf? The answer is simple and powerful, the people. The public waters, the right to fish shrimp and harvest oysters. These are rights handed down by those who came before us and entrusted to us to preserve for those who will follow. Any plan that itches, that itches toward privatizing or restricting the public riches is a wound to our shoreline economy, our cultural heritage, and our democratic ideals. We're not asking for shortcuts or unregulated access, we're demanding transparent governments, robust science, and management that keeps the public trust intact. We want policies that protect reef health, ensure fair access, and support sustainable harvest, so that a family today can put supper on the table tomorrow and years from now. We want to see clear, transparent processes for management decisions that involve community input, independent science and accountability, and oversight. Public access rules that remain fair and open, fair and open, ensuring small-scale fishers, recreational users, and commercial crews can work the water side-by-side without arbitrary barriers. Habitat restoration and protection that sustains oyster reefs, improves water quality, safeguards fisheries, and maintains the resilience of the Gulf Coast against storms and climate change. So, and I've wrote some more here, but I'm not gonna read any more of it, I think y'all get the point of it. Many of us have legacies and families, whether they're net makers, whether they're shrimpers, whether they were fishermen, or, you know, just, just friends, down-to-earth friends, have grown up in this great city we call Biloxi, and they're depending on us, and so are the families in Paschus Chan, Gulfport, Pascagoula, and, and you want to tell the truth, all up and down the Gulf Coast, all the way to North Carolina to Texas, if you want to really look at it, if you, if you read up on what's happening along these water shores and everything, it's, it's just debilitating. And I hope that in addition to a resolution that we say we support something, that we'll attend some meetings and get in front of those legislators and say, hey, I'll sit down at the table with you, and I'll sit down with some of these people that are begging, they're proud, they don't like to beg, but they're on the verge of begging for some help. So with that, I yield the rest of my time to Mr. Ryan Bradley, uh, he's the executive director of Commercial Fisheries United.
Wow, thank you, Mr. President, I appreciate you inviting me today, I appreciate you for bringing this resolution forward. I really couldn't have said it better myself, you hit all the points that are important to us. My name's Ryan Bradley, as Councilman introduced, I'm a fifth-generation commercial fisherman, grew up in Long Beach fishing out of Paschus Chan, I fish these waters all over this coast, in the Gulf. For the last 10 years, I've been leading an organization called Mississippi Commercial Fisheries United. We're a membership organization that represents our hard-working commercial fishing families here in Mississippi. And, um, I just want to give a little background on how we've got to this point and what's going on, kind of the update, the status of our reef with the oysters. As Councilman had mentioned, there's a tremendous amount of fresh water from the 2019 bonnet carry that devastated our fisheries. NDMR estimates our oyster reefs were decimated or experienced about 96% mortality from this event. So we've been, well, working hard to recover, the state has spent a lot of resources and federal dollars and state dollars, recovering our resources, and I'm happy to report that Mother Nature is finally starting to cooperate with us, and we're seeing just really great growth on our oyster reefs all over the Mississippi Sound. The Western Sound has been open last year for the first time in six years, in 2024 it opened, and our fishermen were able to harvest bountiful harvests of oysters on that side. And we heard from DMR, they had their meeting in this building this morning, and Director Spraggins had mentioned he's gonna be working on getting oyster season, the oyster reefs opened in the Eastern Sound, so that means right here in Biloxi Bay. That's gonna be great for the city of Biloxi. And so what does this mean? You know, as we're facing all these challenges and our fishermen are trying to recover, you've got a beautiful harbor right here in Biloxi, we've got a lot of commercial workboats, shrimp boats, fishing boats, a lot of these same guys that shrimp, they oyster too, and so to be able to harvest oysters in the unfettered public access model that we've been having for decades, actually centuries, is essential to our way of life and our culture and our heritage all throughout the Mississippi Gulf Coast, especially here in Biloxi, which was once renowned as the seafood capital of the world. So, um, what happened over the period of the last several years, the legislature has moved to privatize our oyster reefs here in the Mississippi Sound, and of the last couple of years, they've moved to lease up to 80% of the permitted oyster reefs in the Mississippi Sound, and that's all areas of the sound, east and west. And so that is a huge seismic shift in the policy and management of our oyster resource... shift in the policy and management of our oyster resource that we believe is certainly going to harm not only fishermen, but cities and municipalities as well. The city of Pascua Stan recently passed a similar resolution expressing concern, because essentially, these privatization of up to 80% would allow just a handful of companies to monopolize potentially the entire fishery. And so that would lead to less boats in their harbor, less stall rent being collected, less revenue being generated by the city from their harbors. And so we're in a really great opportunity and time right now, where all we have to do is maintain the status quo. And we're going to see great public benefits and continued public access, where any of our children and grandchildren will have the right to go and hunt and fish and pursue oysters or other species on these reefs, the same way our forefathers have done for generations. And so that's what this is about. This is about protecting our proud seafood heritage and protecting the right to fish for all Mississippians. And I think that's an easy thing to do, and we ask for the council's support. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to.
What's next? What's next? We won a preliminary injunction, but what's next?
Yeah, so, yeah, great point. I forgot to leave out, we did challenge the state law, the constitutionality, and several other different complaints about the laws that have been changed regarding the privatization. Just yesterday, the court ruled in our favor. They issued a preliminary injunction. They are going to halt the leases. They're going to enjoin the Department of Marine Resources from issuing these leases until we've had a chance to further debate the merits of the entire case. We have many more complaints that are under consideration by the court, and we're going to continue where that takes us, but.
Mr. Bradley, I thank you for coming today and sharing a little bit of your insight. I know you had some friends join you as well, but I thank y'all for taking the time to, to come and attend this meeting and give us just a little glimpse of what's happening. I sure hope we do more to help you. Thank you. That concludes my report. We'll move on to the public agenda, which is citizens' comments. We have a total time of 45 minutes. I'll recognize you by asking you to raise your hand, come up to the front, sign in, and state your name and address so the clerk can record it. You can talk on any topic. This is not a question-and-answer session, so if you ask a question, don't expect an answer. We can direct you to the proper person or persons afterwards. So we'll go ahead and get started. On my left, your right, yes, sir, you raised your hand first. Come on up.
Hello, thank you for having me. My name is Freddie Frick, F-R-I-C-K. I live at 369 Rayner Street, right around the corner. My question is, and I have spoke to Mr. Guines when he was here, and Mr. Creel, the other Mr. Creel, about this in the past, and now it looks like something's getting done, but you said you don't have a yes or no answer. What's going on at the IP with the blacktop, with the dirt that runs down the street every time it rains and ends up in front of my house? I see they're working on it. I've talked to the workers up there. They said that they are blacktopping enough of it for 300 cars. My question is, there's sidewalk and gutter on Calvet and Crocius, but there's no sidewalk or gutter on Rayner Street. And I just wonder who's responsible for that? Why does it stop about, I would say about 50 or 60 yards from Rayner Street north to Back Bay?
This is not question and answer. You can direct that to the administration. They should be able to get, get you in touch with someone to answer your question.
That would be Mr. Creel, who's, who told me in the past that the IP had a five-year sensation to fix that lot, and that was 20 years ago. So I would imagine he would tell me the same thing. So he, he would be the one to tell me if, if that's going forward. Okay? And the last thing is, I have a real simple solution for you. The traffic up and down Rayner Street speeds by my house daily. You own Calvet, where the speed limit is more, it's higher. There's two lanes each direction. My street has one lane. Three-way stop at Strawberry and Rayner. Stop them. They go slow from the railroad tracks up to the red light on Division. And Mr. Marshall, you know about this, you're my new guy. And from Division to the Back Bay, the IP, they just haul butt. And if you put a three-way stop at Strawberry and Rayner, that'll cause them to slow up. The only thing that slows them up is when they get to Back Bay and they hit all that junk at the IP parking lot, then, then they slow up. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Bob Silvestro, 181 Iris. First, I want to thank my wife for coming here and being very nice while I was away. I feel bad for Walt. He like takes the bullet, whatever, down there. Obviously, we have people. The simple answer on Southern Avenue is there's a piece of equipment sitting right there that has not moved. They're not going to tar. If you start the motor up and grade that avenue right there, you'll fix the problem in 50. So I think a lot of stuff happens that gets to a point where people are frustrated. One other thing I've noticed, a lot of things become confrontational. Fight, I noticed it with the clinic. I noticed it elsewhere. And I get it, there's social media. Jerry wants to fight with people. When I was gone, the Elliott property thing went sideways. I was the one who was fighting for that, and then property, the communication just went horrible. So I'm just recommending to Mike and to Elliott Properties that that property's empty. You don't have to do anything for me. Maybe we should have a little town meeting, let them come, and they're going to get help from people who don't understand. But speak to the neighbors, make them feel like they have a voice. Together, we can work to build something there. Maybe there's disinformation. When I moved here, Eli was the guy building St. Jude Homes and doing that. Now, all of a sudden, I don't know. I think that he, they should be nice enough, have a little meeting, let people know what's going on. We don't need anyone from the city except Mike to represent, and just if people have hard questions, he's a businessman, he can answer them. That's all. And together, we go, okay, what is your plan? And it's sitting empty. The police chief all day, what do you want them to do with homeless people? I don't know. Half these people ain't homeless. They're paying the S. But let me tell you something. And I don't want to get off track, but we've done a good job with the homeless. We're doing a bad job of letting new ones in. You know what I mean? And it just, I think we have to go back to a town hall meetings and bring people together, and not get to a point where it's so confrontational, and you guys have to vote, and let's just build Biloxi together. I mean, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on my left, your right, this side of the room? Raise your hand to be recognized. This side, my right, your left, raise your hand to be recognized. Yes, ma'am. What's that?
I had to give y'all some pictures.
Yeah, sure.
This Becky Desport at 1143 Lafayette. I am here to address a problem that's been going on for two and a half years or longer. For the last two years, a restaurant has successfully operated at 1075 Division, right outside the New Keesler Gate. Before that, my husband and I worked seven days a week, 12 to 14 hours a day flipping that building with our own two hands and our social security checks. All the while, me personally maintaining the weed-eating, mowing, et cetera, all the neutral grounds and the strip of land along the back ditch. Actually, it was four years. The city has been done with the new roads and intersections for a while, and they made it known to us that they were now responsible for the job of maintaining all of these areas. After I got a citation from the code enforcement from the city of Biloxi for not mowing the back strip, because I had not gotten to it for three weeks, because I was exhausted at the time, I went to the land records, looked it up, and found out this piece of property was actually owned by the city and always has been. Fast forward to today, and we have called month after month after month for the last two years, to have these neutral grounds mowed, weeded, and maintained with little success. Across Division, all down Division, all the neutral grounds and corners of Porter are cut, except for those bordering 1075 Division. We have had the workers out there doing the work, and they have told us personally, they have been told to skip over this area and not to do any of the maintenance on this, on our area, time after time by Clio. And we have called Craig Ross numerous times, called over and over and over, only to be told, we're coming back, they're coming, but they never do. It makes no sense to me, or anyone else for that matter, to mow all around on both sides of Keesler, all down Division, and skip over this land repeatedly. The people answering the phones down there, because we call all the time, are tired themselves of getting the same message over and over. They themselves are at their wits' end and have said so to us. Is there a reason for this? I don't know the answer. We are asking for relief from the city, that this is no longer a problem for us. Thank you. This has gone on for so long and increasingly and persistently ignored. When it was being done, I will tell you this, already asked them, just put cement down. If you just put cement down, you won't have to maintain it. It'll be wonderful. They said, nope, you don't have to worry about it. We're going to maintain all this. You don't have to do anything. And guys, I'm 70 years old. I can't do this anymore. I appreciate all the hard work you do do on this, but we need some relief. Thank you so much for all that you do do.
Thank you. Anyone else? My right, your left, this side of the room? Anyone in the back? Did I miss anybody? Last chance. Citizen comments are now closed. We'll move on to the policy agenda. First reading.
Ordinance to amend Chapter 2, Article 14, Municipal Facilities.
Have a motion?
I'll move it.
All right, second?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Tisdale, second by Mr. Creel. This is the first reading. Move on to next item B.
Resolution of Notice of Intent to amend Section 9122A of the Code of Ordinances pertaining to garbage collection and disposal fees.
Do I have a motion?
Moved.
Second by Mr. Creel, second by Mr. Tisdale. Mr. Creel?
One second here. Technical difficulty here. I'll defer to Mr. Tisdale.
All right, defer to Mr. Tisdale. Mr. Tisdale?
Sure. This is a procedural resolution, to coin a phrase, I believe. Whenever the garbage collection and disposal fees go up, we have to notify the public first. And this gives the public a heads up that the rates will increase. So if they want to comment at the next, next time this comes up for a reading, most likely at a next council meeting, you have the opportunity to be aware and comment. In a nutshell, the residential and commercial rates are both the same rate, and they will increase $1.25 a month, from $24.25 a month to $25.50 per month. So that's, that's what all this is about. So you're right, we're not voting on the rates now, most likely at our next council meeting. That's it. Thank you.
Anyone else have anything to add? There being no one, call for the question. All in favor?
Say it.
Mr. Gray?
Yeah, Gray.
You vote yea?
Yea.
Okay. Mr. Marshall?
Marshall, yes.
Mr. Neal?
Neal, yes.
Mr. Creel?
Creel, yes.
Mr. Tisdale?
Tisdale, yes.
Mr. Shoemaker?
Shoemaker, yes.
Glavine votes yes. Motion passes unanimous. Item C?
Resolution of the Mayor and City Council expressing strong opposition to the proposed lacing of public oyster reefs in Mississippi waters and in support of commercial fishermen.
Have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Tisdale. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Gray. Any discussion? Mr. Tisdale?
Not really. You put it very eloquently, Mr. President. And it, it, you know, we're a historic city. A lot of people, as was noted by the gentleman from Long Beach you spoke earlier, thanks for coming over again. But this is, this is part of our heritage, and this is more than just heritage. It's livelihood, a livelihood for some of the folks who live here along the coast, not just in Biloxi, but up and down the coast. That having been said, I can fully support this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tisdale. Mr. Gray?
I grew up in a fishing industry. My family on both sides for generations have fished and shrimp in these waters. I've lost three uncles on a shrimp boat. So these reefs were designed for our, for our kids and their kids and their kids. So if we let someone lease them out and they destroy them, then we have no, no fishing, no oyster. And so I support this.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Anyone else have any comments? Any comments? Call for the question, starting with Mr. Gray.
Yes, Gray.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes, Marshall.
Yep, Mr. Neal?
Yes, Neal.
Mr. Creel?
Creel, yes.
Mr. Tisdale?
Tisdale, yes.
Mr. Shoemaker?
Shoemaker, yes.
Glavine votes yes. Motion passes unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen. Need a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Creel. Need a second?
I'll make that second.
Thank you, Mr. Tisdale, for your second. We'll start with Mr. Creel.
All right, just real quick, just to clear up some confusion on 5I, the parking spaces that seem to be topic of information today on social media via email. One question with the administration, if we could, going forward, when we get the dissertation, if we could get a breakdown of, of what the bid is, I understand we accepted the bid in its totality, but if we could be more itemized, that'd be great. Next thing is, the, it's not 18 additional spots, it's enlarging the current 18 spots. So the issue we're having right now is a truck with a boat trailer has to park in the median in order for the trailer not to extend past the parking space. Can we, in those trailer spaces, we're having individual cars park in those trailer spaces? And because the spaces aren't long enough to accommodate a boat and a trailer, a truck and a trailer, we cannot put trailer parking only. By expanding these further towards Highway 90, that's where the tree locations are coming from, is from that area north of the parking spaces. We will be able to put trailer parking only on these spots, and we're expanding it. And then the paving is not just those spots. From what I've been told, we're paving the whole area. So I understand everyone's in an uproar about moving a palm tree and how much it costs and, and all of that. But what that is, is we're expanding those current spaces. We're not adding 18 more spaces. We're expanding the 18 spaces there to accommodate boat and trailer parking for the people that launch the boats there in the harbor, just to clarify that.
Who's everyone? Everyone's in an uproar?
Everyone, everyone's in an uproar. Check your email.
All right, I checked it. I checked it.
Check your email. That, that's the main concern I had. The, the, item K, the 7300, that's in addition to cover HVAC costs for the stadium? Lighting, lighting.
Process.
Okay, HVAC's in process, all right. And then on M is just our recurring payment from the county. All right, that's all I have.
All right, Mr. Tisdale?
Yes, on item B.
Uh, yes, on item B, this is, um, removing 32,000 from salary and wages to postage in the water and sewer department, is this why we, apparently we're short money there, is it just a budgeting issue, or is there, I know there's been an increase or projector, a proposed increase in postage, do we know, do we just budget inappropriately for that, which might happen since it's always our best guess? Or you can get back to me, if you don't, if you don't know, you can get back to me, I'm curious.
Yes, I think that's just an increase in postage, and that's going to be one of the things that we're going to discuss later on.
Right.
Of how do we reduce that, so, and we've got some options on the table as well to be able to offer to you all.
Okay, and, and the increase in postage was mentioned earlier in some of these budget workshops, thank you. On item C, removing money from salaries and wages, basically from health insurance to, yeah, from salaries and wages. How do, yeah, it's for the Harrison County Utility Authority, how did we arrange at this situation where we're transferring funds? Did we, again, did we not budget adequately for that, or is this an unexpected price increase, or cost increase from the utility authority? Do you?
Probably some special, uh, circumstances as far as emergency repair, that's the only thing I know of, is if something breaks, we're responsible for it, and I don't know whether that's a amendment that caused us to put that back in the budget.
I would assume the other members of the authority also had some sort of increase, we're all in this together.
It depends on how much, you know, if you break something, it's not across the board, it's probably Biloxi specific.
Okay. Um, I don't know, recognizing funds from Harrison County, uh, for the port, and that's $450,000. So we're, we're moving this from a restricted account debt service to port and pier repairs. Somewhat, I'm curious, do we just, we've paid off all our debt in, uh, in the port division, or? Thank you, Rachel, hope you can enlighten us, I don't know.
County deposits funds in a trust account at People's Bank, that is a little trust account.
Correct.
Trustee. Ready, this is debt service cleared, $400,000 to move into capital projects to fund additional funds.
So do, does the port division still have debt to pay?
There is a bond, we will receive as much as there is a bond.
Right, but it's, right, and it's restricted, which means that's where it's supposed to go, but we're unrestricting this, what's the purpose? What do we have plans for with this?
The money is to pay our debt service, already kept in sufficient funds to pay the debt service, this is the money above and beyond for debt service.
Okay, so then, so, so, so if, so if we have enough in that account to satisfy the debt, this 450,000 that's coming in now is going into piers and maintenance? Okay, and, and, all right, I got that part now. So why, i- if we don't have any plans to use it, what are we using this 450,000 for? Please don't say, uh, for port and pier repairs, specifically, what, what repairs are we looking at?
Get on the mic.
Things today, it's, the parking lot expansion. We've made emergency pier repairs, there were one portion of pier collapse, that was done with the, the air conditioner that was in the bathroom during Billfish, that had some outages that everyone heard about, that is being done of this money.
Okay.
But there would be a separate resolution any time there's any repairs or any, anything done. Basically, you know, when we started the original port bond, there was a lot of debt service, that was six years ago, the debt service is getting smaller and smaller, but the county is putting the entire amount of funds into debt service. So this allows us to build up the repair funds, when we get a project, we bring that before y'all and get that approved, and we've got money to fund it.
Okay. Do you happen to know what the balance is in that account project for, for port and pier repairs? That'd be Project 1102, I think we just part money there for repairs as they, as are needed.
Assuming everything on this agenda is...
Sure, yeah.
$1,169,000, $216,000 and 67 cents.
Okay. So there's money to, so there's, there's a million and a half dollars to replace, to replace or repair piers at this point, right?
Port related.
Okay.
It does, that, those funds are...
Are there any, excuse me, are there any piers that are not port-related in the city?
No.
Okay, so we can use these funds?
That we own, that we own.
You can also use it for parking.
You know, and we can also use it to match other projects, like the rebuilding of Sherman Cannon, uh, a $5 million project, which is to replace the, I think we had an $838,000 request to replace the wooden pier, we've actually submitted some things that could be used as a match to four or five million dollars that would come from Gomasa or, uh, one of those other projects to, to replace that, but that would be for matching and use of those kinds of projects.
Or that, or that other pier we hear, always hear about?
Nope, no, it could be, it could be.
It could be, okay.
But in part of that, you know, the $2 million, uh, that was going to be our part of the 4.2 million, uh, was going to come from that, that sort of fund, you know, in future years, because we're going to get this every year.
Right.
Yeah, we do, and it's, it's about one, it's the equivalent of a mil, that's about 1.9 million a year, we get it in four installments, right?
Yeah.
Care about, okay. All right, that's all I have, thank you, that's all I have, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, we'll start with Mr. Gray, anything on the consent?
Mr. Rachel? Don't run off yet. On this, on this, um, parking lot extension?
Yes.
Now, the palm trees, that's included in the price, right, to relocate them?
Having the palm trees relocated, I don't know where.
Right, but, but all that's included.
Everything.
I just want to make sure, because we have a lot of emails going around, it's going to cost us a lot of money to, to move these, I just want to get it on record. And this here's extending this, uh, these parking bays is a fine example, it's why we need to, uh, get Coon Street redone, because there's overcrowded parking areas and multiple people complain about their trucks and trailers getting hit because they can't get in and out, because they, they don't have enough room and they're way overcrowding, so...
Counselman, let me ask you, let me, while you're talking about that, you know, we did some things to create more, even more parking, uh, to the north, by the old yacht club and some of that, so we did not repair or replace that service drive, we created that for even more parking, but we're going to triple Coon Street, you know, as far as what you can put in the water at one time, instead of one bay that usually holds two, we'll have two more additional, so that would, you put six in the water at one time, you do have to have a place to park them. You know, what you use at Small Crab Tombs, the only one around in East Biloxi.
Yes, sir.
It's important, we, we have 800,000 tucked away, we bid it, Christie, it was 1.3 to 500,000, we'll make us 1.8, so we're getting about 1.3, we'll make that, uh, happen soon as, you know, we get the, uh, entitlements for that, you know, as well as Oak Street improvement.
Yes, uh, Coon Street's been needing that for many years, probably 10 years or more, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall, anything on the consent? Uh, I always say the right, come back to me, all right? Mr. Neal?
Uh, I'm good.
All right, Mr. Shoemaker?
No, I have nothing.
All right, I'm coming back to you, Mr. Marshall?
Uh, no, I have nothing.
All right, I have none. All right, I'll go ahead and get the, um, the verbal votes, and then we'll come back for exceptions, uh, we'll start at the end with Mr. Gray.
Gray, yes.
All right, Mr. Marshall?
Marshall, yes.
Mr. Neal?
Neal, yes.
Mr. Creel?
Yes.
Mr. Tisdale?
Tisdale, yes.
Mr. Shoemaker?
Shoemaker, yes.
Glavine votes yes, any exceptions, Mr. Gray?
No.
No exceptions, Mr. Marshall?
Marshall, no.
No exceptions, Mr. Neal?
Neal, no.
Neal, no, Mr. Creel?
Creel, no.
Creel, no, Mr. Tisdale?
Tisdale, no.
All right, Mr. Shoemaker?
Shoemaker, no.
All right, Glavine has no exceptions as well, but the record shows unanimous without any exceptions. Move on to code enforcements. Go ahead and open it up.
Got a long one today. Luis Burrell at 221 Spanner Lane, this has been resolved. AOH Church of God at Zero Bellman Lane, this property's still in violation.
All right, is there anyone here to speak on behalf of AOH Church of God, Bellman Lane? There being no one, this case is closed.
Coastal Development Group Incorporated, 385 Short Street, is resolved. CUHA for item D LLC at 220 Eisenhower Drive, this is resolved. Item E at Zero Shady Place, Christian and Cynthia Kowalski, this is still in violation.
Anyone here to speak on behalf of Christian and Cynthia, Cynthia Kowalski? Shady Lane?
Shady Place.
Shady Place? There being no one, this case is closed.
Item F, 12459 Oaklawn Road, Joseph DeCicco, this is still in violation.
Anyone here to speak on behalf of Joseph DeCicco? 12459 Oakland, Oaklawn Road? There being no one, this case is closed.
Item G, 13274 Hustley Road, Randall Sutton, this is still in violation.
Anyone here to speak on behalf of Randall R. Sutton, 13274 Hustley Road?
What's, what's, what's the violation there?
Lot of debris.
Okay.
The road is maintained, there's a lot of junk vehicles, the fences down in multiple areas, there's actually another slide, I believe.
Okay.
You can see the debris in the bottom picture.
Sure.
There's this one, he's on a jack.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Anyone here to speak on behalf, I'll say it again, Randall R. Sutton, 13274 Hustley Road? There being no one, this case is closed.
Item H, Trin Din and Tuwin, 194 Lily Lane, this is resolved. Item I, Amos Hamilton at 217 Baptist Alley, this has been resolved. Item J, Hong Lee, 276 Third Street, this is resolved. Item K, Shane Moran, 13458 Green Hill Circle, this has been resolved. Anna Anastagio, item L, 13451 Green Hill Circle, this is also resolved. Item N, I apologize, M, Addie Brown, 6308 Shady Creek, ask for an extension to September 23rd.
There's an ask for extension to when?
September 23rd.
September 23rd, do I have a motion?
I had a question.
There's a question, go ahead, Mr. Gray.
How long have they been in violation?
Been quite some time, but we've been in communication with the property owner, and we do have a plan of action.
So, so it's been a while, so, you give them till the 23rd, that's over, that's over 30 days.
The violations in place will take time, A, to gather funds, and B, to get the contractors out there to get it done. It's not just mowing the grass or picking up trash, it's going to be making repairs to a roof, putting skirting around the trailer, and then picking up, fixing a window, picking up a little bit of debris, but that should be done.
Okay, all right, that's all I have.
All right, chair entertain a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Made by Mr. Tisdale, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Gray, all in favor? Uh, we got to start with Mr. Gray, all in favor?
Gray, yes.
All right, Mr. Marshall?
Marshall, yes.
Mr. Neal?
Neal, yes.
Mr. Creel?
Creel, yes.
Mr. Tisdale?
Tisdale, yes.
Mr. Shoemaker?
Shoemaker, yes.
All right, and Glavine votes yes, it's unanimous to give them their extension. Next item.
Item N, 7050 Wool Market Road, Ernest and Deborah Thibodeau, this is still in violation.
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of Ernest and Deborah Thibodeau? 7050 Wool Market Road? There being no one, this case is closed.
Item O, James Oliver, 13416 Larkin Drive, this has been resolved. Item P, William French and Sue Davis, Zero Shore Crest Road, this is also resolved. Q, Francis Ryan Bold, 308 Heller Drive, this is resolved. Item R, TSWS Environmental Properties LLC, 12163 Parkers Creek Road, this is resolved. Item S, Joseph Glenn Ellis Senior, 337 St. Mary Boulevard, this is resolved. T, L7D Properties LLC, 2038 North Drive, this has been resolved. Item U, Randolph and Jodina Fagan at 342 Magnolia Street, this is resolved. B, Curtis Jermaine Johnson at 2181 Pops Ferry Road, this is resolved. Item W, Sarah Sanji Estate, 2177 Pops Ferry Road, this is resolved. Item X, Jared Russo, 366 Main Street, this is still in violation.
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of Jared Russo, 366 Main Street? There being no one, this case is closed.
Item Y, Quavia Lampley and Hunter Bergerin, 827 Carole Circle, this is resolved. Item Z, Oldenwald LLC, 1728 State Street, this is still in violation.
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of Oldenwald LLC, 1728 State Street? There being no one, this case is closed.
Extension, item AA, Helen Galot, Zero Base Side Drive, this has been resolved.
All right, code enforcement cases are now closed.
That's some Kenny. This, I think this is the second, third meeting, that y'all have been in the whole alphabet. I mean, the people is obviously calling y'all, they're ready for, to get the city cleaned up, so are we, we appreciate y'all, you and all your guys, for doing the hard work, and it's not easy getting all this stuff done, but we, we definitely appreciate y'all, thank y'all.
All right. Need a motion for the routine, made by Mr. Tisdale, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Creel, Mr. Tisdale?
Um, yes, I would ask that vendor 6169 on the docket of claims be removed?
That, that's a legal expense, it should have gone to the insurance claim, it's $815, that should be paid through the city's insurance account, so, that's, that's on in there.
All right, there's a motion by Mr. Tisdale, so I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Creel, any discussion? No discussion, all right, but for the, is, is this sort of an amendment, or do we?
We're just removing it from the docket, it will not be paid.
We're going to vote on removing it, and then we'll vote on the docket as amended?
Yes.
Okay, all right, that sounds good. Okay, all right, that sounds good. Just one second. So page 24. Vendor 6169. We got it, okay. All right, I'll ask for the vote to remove this item. Mr. Gray?
Gray, yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Marshall, yes.
All right, Mr. Neal?
Neal, yes.
Mr. Creel?
Creel, yes.
Mr. Tisdale?
Tisdale, yes.
Mr. Shoemaker?
Shoemaker, yes.
All right, Glavine votes yes. Passes. Now asked to vote on the routine agenda as amended. Mr. Gray?
Gray, yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Marshall, yes.
Mr. Neal?
Neal, yes.
Mr. Creel?
I recuse myself from the Craig Johnson expenditures, but yes on the rest.
Okay. Did you get that? Did you record that? Comment? Did you record his comment? You got it, okay. Mr. Tisdale?
Yeah, Tisdale votes yes.
All right, Mr. Shoemaker?
Shoemaker, yes.
All right, Glavine votes yes. Routine is passed. All right. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, and I would move that we adjourn in memory of Brenda Johnston and Peter Roy Elder.
Thank you, Mr. Tisdale. Do we have a second, or we all second it?
Second.
All right, seconded by Mr. Creel and everyone else. Mr. Gray?
Gray, yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Marshall, yes.
Mr. Neal?
Neal, yes.
Mr. Creel?
Creel, yes.
Mr. Tisdale?
Tisdale, yes.
Mr. Shoemaker?
Shoemaker, yes.
Glavine, yes. Passes unanimous. Take a brief five-minute break, and then we'll come back to our special call meeting to continue the budget proceedings.